This conference will now be recorded.
No, I haven't. Sorry. I have not received one from Eric.
Okay. Didn't that a county applicant, the fire chief knows, I'm gonna forget his name, left a message, but those are the only two I pursued. Okay, so. Send them online. Can we have Dottie assume command tonight? Start this.
Ready to go?
Lot three?
Yep.
Okay, here it is.
So he got your distracted too.
Just in time. Good deal.
Okay, Tyson Luchford, Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brandon Jellings.
Here.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Dottie Smith.
Here.
Tom Wheatley.
Here.
Are there any public comments from the audience not pertaining to anything on the agenda?
I'm not sure about the agenda. This is the first meeting I've ever been to.
You're on it, Captain.
Okay, I'm on it. I want to make sure.
Okay, if you would review the minutes, please. Any questions or comments on last minute minutes?
When we approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All favors signify with aye. Aye. Next, party for elected chair and vice chair for 2024. I think we had a discussion, we had a discussion last month. So, in fact, meets with everybody's approval. Say with a vote of affirmation.
Who do we decide?
I would be chair and Tommy, teaming as vice chair. That's on everyone?
Yeah.
And can I have a motion?
Yeah, motion. Yeah, I would be chair, seven's vice chair.
Any further discussion? Signify your vote, positive, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we would do the, when we have another board of designer pills, we'll do that. We'll fix that one too. When we have the next board of designer pills, we'll take care of the chair and the chair.
Okay. Third item is consider recommendations of city commission regarding the annexation of twenty eight third, three seventy nine, eighty first road.
This is a multi-part application. All of the three items on the agenda are related to the same thing. But we have to, in order to do what the applicant is wanting to do, we would have to annex it, rezone it, and do a conditional use permit. So, first off, we'll deal with the annexation. This property is not adjoining the city. And it's about, is it five acres?
Yes.
What was? And so what has to happen is the county commission have to hold a meeting after, what happens tonight is we're just doing a recommendation like we would normally do for an. After that, the city would have to, the city commission would have to request that the county commission review this application. And then the county commission has to determine whether or not this is going to be an issue like it would affect another city or, well, any city in the county. That's basically what they're looking at to make sure that it's not going to hinder their growth. So if they determine that, then it would go back to the city commission and they would make a final determination whether or not to annex it. The reason I've chosen to do, even though this seems out of order that we're doing, the talking about the rezoning, the conditional use permit, I think it's fine to do that because what I will do is we won't be taking those two items to the city commission until they've approved the annexation. So, what my proposal, assuming that you approve of this, would be to take this to the city commission next Tuesday for their consideration of that first part of that. And then it's a, it's a bit of a drawn up process, of course. It probably would be at the very earliest, if everything goes well, sometime in April. Depends on the county commission, when they are willing to do it. So, we can't, obviously, we're not going to rush them to do something they don't want to do. So the first action would be just to make the recommendation, kind of like what we had to do at the last meeting, on the property. And I guess I should pull this up. So this is the, let me zoom it out a little bit because that's not going to give you very much to look at here. So, I can even push that out a little bit. So. So the city limits, like this is city limits, but it's an island, so it doesn't count. This is the outer edge of the city limits right here. And this, the property that, I guess I should tell you who it is. Etsanowa is wanting to develop their visitor center on this property. They also own this property and, correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, but they also have rights to these other properties.
So from eighty first road going north, all the way up to the next flat crossing point you have, all the way to the river is, with the exception of Walter Thurman's property, which is down by the highway, we have a hundred year lease with right of first refusal on. So we own the ten acres, five acres you see there in the purple, and then the five acres below it, we own those. And then everything else is on a fifty year, a hundred year lease with right of first refusal.
Who owns the property?
Bud Davis or the Foudry Group.
What was the, what was the group?
F O U D R Y Group. He also owns the property to the east of eighty first road, which right now has a farming lease on it. So we don't know what exactly will happen with that down the line, but basically, between the ten acres we own, we have another seventy acres on the hundred year lease.
If this was annexed, what are you going to do for water? Are you looking to the city for city water?
We would, we would want to hook on to city water. We would also want to hook into city sewer. We are aware that the closest city sewer is across the highway at Country Club Estates. We are aware that that is not completely a downward decline, which means we would probably have to use grinding pumps or a lift, a small lift station or something to get it there. But that would be done at our cost.
The pump station you're saying, or the?
The lift station or the grinder pump or pump or whatever would be done at our cost.
The, the hookups, the, and to the total cost of hooking in the city water and sewer would be one mile, that's not?
Right, because Randy told us that that is the closest place to hook in to city sewer. The reason we feel the need for city water and city sewer is simply that this center with, on the five year, ten year plan we have, we hope to have it open by 2026. We hope it to be a UNESCO World Heritage Site by 2035. It would bring in about two hundred and fifty thousand people a year, which would mean that, you know, using a septic system or other things, you know, might not be the best for us in the long run. We are aware that we don't have to be annexed to hook in to city water and city sewer. We are aware of that. The reason we want to be annexed is the city of Arc City has been a partner on this project since the very beginning. Obviously, you have annexed property directly across the road. We also, we know that to be a UNESCO World Heritage Site and to bring in that number of people every year is going to take probably a lot of outside tourism resources that the city will need to help us provide along with the other cities in the county. UNESCO looks at a fifty mile radius from the site of the location and you have to be able to accommodate that kind of traffic within a fifty mile radius in any direction. So, we want to be annexed simply because we feel like that is the best opportunity for this to grow and be everything it can be for our city. John?
Can this be handled through additional uses of water and sewer?
Yes, I'm confident that's.
No problem. Those are my main questions, Sandy. Take care of that, no city cost.
I do understand that it's an island annex. However, the reason that property was selected is because that property has archaeological and historical significance to this project. And unfortunately, you can't pick that property up and move it somewhere else. That just happens to be where it is. It's also directly across the road from the golf course, which is also archaeologically and historically significant as it was the chief's lodge for the entire village area. So that's why we ended up where we were. Unfortunately, it's not within the city limits, but like I said, we can't pick it up and do it.
We can do a separate island annexation such as Country Club. We cannot annex from an island to make an addition to it, but it really wouldn't be.
Right.
You're across the highway and then do a separate annexation. So it would be.
So why wouldn't we be annexed all ten acres in at once?
So the five acres just to the south of, the five acres we're asking for annex, at this time, we have some issues with being able to build on that property. It has to do with Lake Louise and the canyon area. It's right there, the wetlands that runs through it. And once we start touching that property, we get into all of the EPA and we get into a lot of stuff. So, we simply didn't request it to be annexed simply because we didn't believe we were going to use it to build on. Obviously, we'll have some trails and other things up there, but it's basically just agricultural land at this point, so that's why we didn't request all ten. We're not opposed to having that part annexed if that, if that makes a difference to all of you. We just didn't see the need since we are not able to build on it at this point.
Now, what happens if we don't annex? What impact does that have?
So if you don't annex, the building will still build up. However, the ability to reach the UNESCO threshold will be much more difficult because one of the things UNESCO, and by the way, it's United Nations. It's a group of world heritage sites around the country of cultural and historical significance. When you become a UNESCO facility, and you have to be very unique to be able to do that. And the reason that we qualify is we are the second largest Native American site in the US and Canada. We also are the only Native American site that actually has an original map drawn of the site when it was in existence. So, in order to qualify for that, what UNESCO is always worried about is how does the area around it support that? In other words, if they could, if they describe it, then would the area be able to provide enough restaurants and provide enough housing and, or I should say hotels, lodging, tourism, all of that? And so if it's not in the city limits, then that takes one of the major factors away from us. Now, not to say we couldn't do it without, and I would still strive to do it without, but this would clear the way for us a little bit easier.
This is the development that has been for the whole area, state, the county, the cities. It's a good development.
Well, it has been endorsed by the Kansas Department of Tourism. We did get a Sprint grant of a half million dollars to get it going. They are providing us with tourism resources and whatnot. Because of course Kansas is not known for archaeology, first of all. And second of all, no one had any idea that the second largest settlement was here. The upside to all of that is it is here and it's not going to move. So now it's just up, it's just up to us as far as what we do with it.
Just for the record, and you have alluded to it, but I would like to be clear that you are a private, nonprofit entity.
We are. We're a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit. We have a budget of seven million dollars for this facility. We have raised five million, so we're kind of in the backside of our campaign. We are clearing the property now as we speak. We hope to break ground in June. We hope to have the facility running by at least early 2026. And the one thing UNESCO will not let you do is apply before you have a place. So, the goal would be to have it up and running in 2026 and then apply for UNESCO in 2030. They only take applications on every ten years.
Is there anyone else speaking regarding this?
I own the property. Just talk about that. Walter Thurman.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Walter Steve Thurman. Eighty six twenty US Highway one sixty six, Arc Kansas City, Kansas.
And you own which property, sir?
The land right around the other side, just probably under yards of the Lake Louise. There's probably, I think, seven to nine acres I own. They own five acres, which they're living in as a residence right now. I know they're going to build a center, I'm okay with whatever that is, but I hunt, I fish down there. They've already started cleaning up. Our process has people down there. They've got trails, that stuff. Same to ask with the idiot, who were they hired to clean it up that stole some antique wheels I had down there? And some, like a car frame and some deer. I hunt, I fish. I bought this, my nephew's nieces. I bought this before they had anything to do with it. And Dr. Ross came over when I, when he first found out I owned that property. He came over and talked to me and I said, well, I hunt, I thank you. I'm a country boy. I was raised down driving out. I just know how to do that. But down in that area is where my family now hunts and fishes. I've had people come down there and I've had interest from out of town. Some people want to use it for hunting.
Your property?
My property, yes. And I don't want nobody hurt. And I've shot down there and did stuff like that and blow up. Or I just, that's my property. That's what I did. I shoot pistols, I shoot rifles, I shoot shotgun. I have deer, I have turkey. You know, there's, my nephew, he traps, he does tanning. But I was there first. Well, she's talking about the Country Club just over at an angle from their house. It's not directly across. It's, or the housing position. The old Country Club, which is now Great Life Fitness, is across the street, which they leased all that land. Last I was told, it was going to be a sixty year lease, which it doesn't matter whether it's sixty or hundred. The property they own is used for the same thing I am right now. It's residential. They're living in it. There's people there. They haven't built the building yet or did any of that. Like I said, I might, I would like to stay there because I do kayak too. I got to the middle of the river. And that's what I bought it for, getting to possibly retire there. Yes, I've had some people make me some very good offers on it. I have accepted nothing right now. I don't know that I will. But, to come in, I came and I talked to Mr. White. He said, I didn't think I'd raise my taxes or anything. Well, they do that. I'm not sure, because I talked to him later. He said, the only place they got a little section in this county is you don't. They're doing that because I talked to him about it, put the section off and do all those jumping around. Last time, I'm not a lawyer, I think I got, wasn't common practice by no means.
The annexation, is that what you're?
Yeah, the annexation, that's what I'm saying. Of properties around like that, just to jump. Yeah, I'm right in the middle. And like I said, Dr. Ross came and talked to me once, probably five years ago, maybe six. And he said, well, I appreciate it if you don't shoot your gun between hours of seven and eight or something like that. And I'm like, you know, I bought that property for that intention to use. I have a model, a complete house. I got approximately forty by seventy shots out there. I made it. I wish there was more I could do, but yeah, they went down in there and cleaned. They didn't clean my area. I don't know why they would take my relics, my deer bits and stuff like that, but I know a critter didn't take any of it because it was wired, safety wired fence posts.
Do you know who didn't take?
They happened to disappear when they were doing the cleaning up and making trails down in there. They, like I said, they started making trails and cleaning down. I don't know which I told them. If you go like on the edge of my property, I don't have a concern with it. But I do want to be able to hunt and fish and stuff like that. I said, you're around people out here. I need to know. I may just walk out my back door. I caught a deer waiting. Now, when I near out and fish, I got up in the tree again. I enjoyed it. My nephew shot a deer out there. My great nephew.
So how would this annexation negatively affect you?
Negative, well, the city limits, I can't hunt. I can't shoot.
You wouldn't be in the city.
We propose, what our biggest thing is, we don't want twenty, thirty, forty thousand people right next door to us. We have enough, enough theft and stuff in the area, whether it be them or somebody else. It's just, no, it's not real good.
Whether they're annexed or not will not affect this project going ahead. It will go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm just saying city taxes for a fact, because they said it's into the city and they can't jump around and they do take mine, which is approximately a quarter mile from the bridge to where the city limits is right now on the highway on that side of town. They said just familiarity alone would raise my taxes approximately seven hundred and seventy dollars a year. And that's without the regular general income costs, whatever that may be, because it goes up every year.
State, county, they cannot, the city cannot annex from an island annexation. And this is an island, island annexation. You own a separate piece of property. The city cannot annex you from their property. It's against the law. State won't allow. Okay, their project is going to go ahead whether we annex or not. It's going to go ahead. This is a big deal project. I don't know who took your things. I have nothing to do with it. I don't know that. So no, no one has anything to do with it.
I'm just saying the people they hired. I don't know that they did either, the people they hired.
But, the project's going to go ahead. But if we annex or not, it's a benefit to the city for us to annex. It won't affect your taxes because you won't be in the city.
What will they do when I start shooting out there? I don't want somebody, life's more important than anything. I'm sitting right here.
I agree.
That would be, cause you're in the county and if we annex, start shooting in the city. That call would be to the county to come talk to you about shooting. That would be that.
And it's also like, say, somebody wants to buy that for use of hunting. That's quite a big income right now. That blocks me from being able to do it because they're not going to be able to do it either.
It's, it's.
If she's in the county, it's still county. There's no city around it. Say, they can do whatever they want with it, but if that's a city identity, I think they're going to do the stipulations on my property.
Do separate things.
Okay, they can't do it?
They know, the monkeys on your back, though, if somebody gets shot, you're in trouble whether it's inside the limits or not. You know, so as far as hunting, if your bullet crosses that line, I mean, you're still in trouble.
But they're, so what if they're trespassing and have to be on my property? If they're having people down there, now I got signs everywhere.
So we didn't want this, every situation, all the way on, your meeting is over. But let's talk about what is rather than what if. And to answer the question, best answers on your property and you shoot them, that's going to be it.
I'm not saying I'm shooting them there because they're on my property. I'm saying because it accidentally, they're there when they shoot.
Are you going to fence the area at all? Have you already got it all marked off or?
So we, we know where the boundary lines are. I think part of the problem that he is alluding to, which is when you're sort of in between that property and his property, you know, it's all, it's all filled with trees and whatnot, so it gets a little blurry as to where that line is. So yes, it is our intent to create some type of barrier to show people, but that doesn't mean necessarily, I understand your concern about the hunting because it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you don't shoot in different direction, it may change. I, I understand all that. But we're going to try to clear that out along the boundary area so that there's a clear boundary for people and then of course do our best to enforce it. But as you know, unfortunately, people are people. But we will do our best to maybe create, help that situation not get created.
Well, that was the thing, the twenty thousand people being there or whatever, that's what I read when I read the article, it said about twenty thousand people down there and my taxes. I mean, I pay too much taxes anyway. If somebody does buy my property, whatever, if I do decide to sell it, I got to put it on. I mean, it ain't far, but I got it.
Mr. Thurman, it won't affect your taxes?
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. That is exactly what I wanted to hear on that one. I forgot. I don't want nobody to get shot either. Turns out people were using this.
And the development is going to go ahead. You are going to have that twenty thousand people whether we annex or not. If that's not in effect, then you will be responsible for where you shoot. That's really the bottom line.
I know. I'm not worried about that. I hate to say it. There were people out there one time. I didn't know. My neighbor called them plumbers. As a matter of fact, I was out there facing a critter. It shot out there and there was people down in the valley. I'm sure it rang their ears, but this is probably when it first all started. The guy that they purchased the property from now, so they parked it over there. I had a problem with that, using my driveway, doing whatever. I don't have a problem with using my driveway.
Who's you?
I said that they want to use your county. Actually, it may be a landlocked, like Dr. Ross told us, but it's been my driveway for fifty years. I've already talked to the county about that. Somebody worried about it because I can't even put a gate across it because it's easement for the electric company and everybody else up there.
Let me, let me back up a little bit and ask you something. Is, do you own the property, your driveway's on?
I own from the pole and the easement is what they said. That's an easement. They can't, landlocked.
Okay, is.
I assume it is, yes.
Is Etsanowa, Sandy, is Etsanowa using this driveway?
Okay, so I'll tell you what I know. So what I know is on the property that we have the hundred year lease on, not the property we own, there has been some back and forth with the owner as to whether he indeed owns Mr. Thurman's driveway. I don't know. We lease that, but we don't use it. Where is the driveway? Can you show us?
So, here's the driveway. This is.
Don't take that property line as gospel.
Green trees right there along the edge of the pond is where they're, they're, got it all cleaned up and they're using it. Doing all that. Yeah, it goes right along that edge right there, but there's telephone poles from the county right there. Everything else, I asked and they said, no, that's our easement. I was going to put a gate at the end of it. So, if you can pull out or whatever, this is, you can't do it. It's easement. They said, plus it's been on that property well before you ever got there.
Is your property on your side clearly marked or no trespassing?
Oh, yes. I got signs down here now. I put them in the valley. Whatever, because when my stuff disappeared, yes, I marked it. I marked it there and at the bridge below. But I'm, like I said, from the bridge up to the top, still the east side of the house is my property. Then I think, I can't remember, it was seven or nine acres. It goes back down. There's a little creek and it kind of goes right the back of it and towards the river to the middle of the river and back around. I used to own property on the other side that despite wanted access to her property. So, maybe where I had middle of the river, she got her property over there.
When you talk to the county about putting a gate, are you talking about a lock gate or just a gate?
I wasn't going to put a lock on it, but I mentioned, well, I don't even have to have a lock. I just put a gate there. And they said, no, because you're going to have accidents because it is easement.
We own, we own property way out in port and we were very, we were eleven miles from anything. And so we were very isolated, but, and it was PLM. It's very controlled. But they put a gate and they locked it. They allowed us, they gave us a key because that property.
I offered you a people a key too. Now you don't need to do that. Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Like I said, I've seen them out there because whenever they came out to clean and stuff like that, they parked it right there. I don't have a problem with that. They can use that.
So to answer your question, actually, we do lease. According to the landowner, we lease the area that is his driveway. However, we have no intention of using any of that area along the highway. We're more interested in the canyon and the two properties that we own at the back. But as far as the dispute with the landowner, I, I don't know. I just don't know. But as far as the dispute with the landowner, I, I don't know. I just don't know.
I've never talked about it. I know who he is. I've never met him.
So know, knowing what you know now, are you opposed to the annexation?
As long as, like she said, that was a big part. We don't want twenty, I oppose twenty thousand people. I don't want nobody getting hurt with a ricochet or a gunshot or what.
Yeah.
But do it don't affect my taxes or anything like that, whatever. County seems to think differently. There's a lot who told me about the bill of evictions and all that. I don't know if they know.
That would only be if you were annexed, is what I'm.
Okay, but you said they cannot annex, we just.
Cannot, they cannot island annex.
Okay.
Okay, which brings me back to Sandy. Just an opinion, Sandy, just an opinion. Okay. If I was Ed Sanoa, I would ask for the whole ten acres to be annexed now. Rather than try and come back to annex the additional five. Because you'll be annexing from an island even though you own.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't foresee that we would be opposed to that in any way. I, I just simply wanted to annex the area that we knew we were building directly on.
Um, do you see, Josh, do you see any problem with them to the ten acres rather than the five acres at this point?
Two pieces connected.
Part of the issue is they're not technically connected.
What separates them from?
That little, this little finger, if you will, right through here.
Is that a private room? So that is a gray area as well. And the, the area in between those two properties is part of the lease. And when this property was bought, when each section was bought, that was discussed. And the reason it ended up in the lease and not in the buy was just in case anybody wanted to eventually, like if Bud wanted to sell any part of the canyon or anything, that's the only direct route in there. Because you've got Walter on one side and you've got us to the north. That was the only way in. And so he is correct that they do not sit completely side by side.
So that's a separate issue. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Does anybody have any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I do.
What's that?
Um, keep in mind, Ed's Noah staff that no matter what you annex or boundaries or anything, if people are gonna visit, aren't used to gunfire, they're used in the hunting land. And there has to be some education through website or onsite, let them know where they're at. And so they don't have to bother the county sheriff every time they hear gunfire, if there's hunting going on. You know, just a minor point, but something will come up. This sound will travel across any boundary you've discussed, so.
I think throughout the county, there's hunting in various areas, isn't there?
The thing that scares me with that valley is if you shoot a high-powered rifle down there, you don't have earplugs, it will ring your ears. Even my shotgun will somewhat ring your ears. I don't, you know, my concern first is safety and then, you know, like I said, other things, but. When I read the articles, like, okay, we can have twenty thousand people, she says a couple hundred thousand, which twenty thousand is probably the initial start up and get all that. Like, I agree, it's probably great for the city and revenue and stuff like that.
It, it's non.
As long as nobody gets hurt. I don't hurt nobody and I don't move.
It's a nonprofit, so the city doesn't get any money from tax.
I'm just saying people come in motel rooms, everything else revenue.
That's right. There is that potential.
And moreover, the county revenue will also be impacted by the business. Because it's not just our city.
All around.
They'll have Oklahoma people parking Oklahoma, I don't care to see it.
I think equipment would cover total, total acres from the edge of my property back at the back clear to where the end of the line is.
The total with, with the leased property is eighty-one and three-quarter acres. Um, the total of just our two properties, one is four point nine seven and one is four point nine six that we own.
Does it go clear to where the rivers, does it go to where the rivers meet?
Yes, it does.
That's where it is? Okay, yes, so that covers a lot of area. I'm sure there's a lot of hunting going down here.
So. Okay. Talked about, does anybody else have anything else? Ben, is there a motion available?
I'll make the recommendation to annex the property at two eight three seven nine eighty-first road.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a voice vote, so all in favor, signify with a aye.
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 Um, any negatives, any nays? Okay, boys, here it is. I need a, we're gonna have a public hearing. I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing to discuss, uh, three tolling, two eight three seven nine eighty-one first road. Uh, one, two, three, second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify with a aye.
Aye.
Public hearing. Josh?
Okay. So when a property is annexed, it comes in automatically as the R one low country residential district. So I had to, I had to dig a little bit to figure out what the most appropriate way to handle this. Um, because obviously we don't want to annex it and then it immediately be out of compliance with our zoning regulations. That doesn't make any sense. Um, so what I proposed, when I looked through our regulations, there is a use that's allowed by conditional use permit. Um, for a nonprofit institution of various natures, I, I just put the educational nature for the sake of ease. Um, in the R three district. And so what we would have to do in order to make that part compliant would be to rezone it from R one to R three. So that's what this first part is, and I'll just go through my normal. Uh, then again, we, we kind of go over this. I'm not gonna belabor this too much. Um, but again, R three is the most restrictive use that would allow this with the conditional use permit. Um, and again, it's to go there, their center. Um, a little bit about the history of the property, of course, it's never been in the city. Um, but the house that's on there today was built in nineteen fifty-six and there's some other buildings on the property that, uh, were built since then. Uh, again, it was just a residential site before Ed Sanoa purchased it. Um, so I've looked at the comprehensive plan. Um, this is not in our growth area. When we did the comprehensive plan, we did not plan for this. So there is no future use designation, um, to tell us what to do. Uh, we probably would have called it ag if we had planned this area. Um, then the comprehensive plan, there's also a couple of goals related to economic development. And so I pointed those out in the staff report. Uh, we kind of talked about this already too, where could affect, uh, the economy in a positive way by the tourism that it brings in. Area zoning, again, because it's, because it's isolated, it's difficult to show this on the map. Um, this is our two zoning and country club estates, so that's the closest, I guess you could say. And then the others areas, like the Niebler Pond area is right there, is ag, okay.
What about the property across the highway from Niebler? Is that in county? The, the house that's there? No, it's, no, it's just north of Niebler section.
This area right here.
Okay, where's Niebler on your map?
Niebler Pond is right down here.
Okay, straight up.
This.
The house.
Yeah.
Okay, is that in county or city?
No, it is in the city.
In the city.
To the north, that's not.
To the north is correct, it's not.
It's not. It, well, it is for bad.
That's south of the ground.
It starts right there where the federal parts are, the RV parts is where the city limit sign is right now.
So just south of the roundabout on the east side is the house.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That is within city.
That's what I'm saying. And that, that's this property right here, to oversize. So change, changing it from R one to R three really is not incompatible with what we're doing. So that's why I pointed that out. So here is the entrance, that is that road we were just talking about, the entrance into the property. The property line must be right about there.
Is this the driveway?
No, that's, that's the house back there is what she uses to get to their house. I guess that's still on my butt, last mine is too, but I don't know anything about that one. I've never asked. But she said she has, I guess it's fine.
So this is.
They used to get to the house.
This is eighty-first road looking north, so it is a gravel road in this area. Um, this is in front of the driveway. This is looking south back towards the highway. It is still gravel for a while. Um, this is a cross street, I'm just, sorry, I know that was really shadowy, but it's just a. This is, the pavement actually does start before you get to the highway. I think I measured four hundred-ish. Um, this actually is paved from north of the highway. I'm not sure what the story is behind that, but at some point.
Is that facing north?
This is facing south.
Okay.
So this, well, this is a construction sign for the bridge, so that's blocking what I was trying to show. These, these houses, you can see just kind of barely, that's Country Club Estates.
Okay.
Right on the other side, that's a, yeah.
So here's, here's a better picture of that intersection. That's Country Club Estates. And, and of course, it changes the Country Club Road when you go south. There. So Sandy provided me with a site plan. So this, this paved area and this white, the white piece is the center.
That's the proposed.
So this would be the, that five acres would be right in this area. This is the other five acres that we showed. And then I'm sure these are just conceptual.
They're trails.
Yeah, but they're trails around the area. This, this is Mr. Thurman's property, just barely in there.
It kind of runs an angle down there, kind of weird, like she said. There's a bridge down there that was old county bridge. There's a big oak tree right by it, that's my border going past over that. Like she said, it's hard to tell, but you have to go down there with a chair.
And you could go back for a minute, Josh, I just want to clarify. So you see the southern piece of property we own that has the red dots in it? Okay, those are things that we are gonna put on that property, but they don't involve any building. They're just things that we set there. Because again, that second part of the property that we're not annexing would not be cohesive to any kind of basement or foundations or anything like that.
You say things that, that doesn't compute, I mean, what kind of things?
It would be like replica villages that just go on the top of the ground instead of digging down because the soil ratio in that area is only two and a half inches to bedrock. Wow.
Sure.
And paving the road, you just don't have to mention that yet.
Say that again.
Are we, are you paving the road all the way in there, I assume?
So you'll go back to the picture, the paved road. Back in the eighties, the city was going to pave part of this road. And I've dug up all the records I could find at, sorry, the county. Dug up all the records of the county I could find. This had to do with before they rebuilt the highway. And what happened was between the scout sign and where the pavement ends, they were digging to, digging somewhat to create an area for the pavement. And when they did, they came upon human remains. Because of course, that's the nature of this property. So when they did that, that was before the Repatriation Act of nineteen ninety. So they were not required by law to do anything besides have the coroner come out, which he did, and make a report. Um, so when you start talking about digging and pavement and things like that, it, we would only, we would only want and be able to do that stuff if we could go just basically over the top of what we have. In other words, we wouldn't want to do a lot of digging. Now, I understand you're probably thinking, but you're gonna build a center and you're gonna dig. Well, the area that the center is going has already been investigated for that. Um, but we know that in the eighties, they found things right here. Now the Repatriation Act would stop you, which hit, uh, human remains from doing anything there. So when you say, do we want to pave that, I can't answer that. It depends on how it could be done and what that, what that whole thing would look like.
So you, your parking lot is paved.
Parking lot is paved, so now if you go back to the other picture, Josh. We had a group of people out last summer who did nothing but cover the entire five acre property that we're gonna build on, looking for things that were gonna cause us issue. Uh, the only thing that was found is, Josh, if you can take your cursor and go a little bit to the north of the parking area, but not to the tree line, so between the tree line and the parking area, there is a significant feature there that is about three feet underground. And we don't, we're not disclosing what that is, but we would not want to put anything on top of it. Therefore, that it looks a little bit off the way we have it all positioned. Why didn't we put that way up on the tree line? But the reason for that is because we're, we're working around things that we know are in the ground.
Will the house that's there now be demolished?
No, we do not want to demolish the house. The house will actually be sort of a little bit of an add-on to the building. It'll be, eventually be a place where visiting archaeologists and people on sabbatical and graduate students would be able to stay while they're working at the facility and on the property.
There's tunnels over there. Well, we're late for it, I remember.
So he is correct. The other reason we cannot build on the second five acres we own to the south is because there are caves that run, there is a stream that runs along the, um, highway. Okay, and that's part of the wetlands. So again, we're getting the wetlands territory. But there are caves that run from that stream all the way across to almost the conjecture of the property that we're building on. So you'll notice we're not building anything along that tree line. We're not building anything along the rock-lined edge of the canyon because of that. So there are lots of things going on underground. We have the geology service, we, we've got the wetlands people, we've got the Corps, you name it, they've been here. We kind of know where everything is and we're going to have to work around all of that. And so the answer is those caves are still there. Um, we have some significance to those that will come out and maybe be part of the overall experience while you're there. Um, but I do think we've done our due diligence in getting everything checked out to our best ability. Which is another reason we can't build on that second five acres, because of course, those caves would, with the weight of, with too much weight.
Does anybody else have anything else to say? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of closing the second hearing, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. We have a motion to recommend to the City Commission to approve or disapprove, request to zone R three, R one to R three.
I'll make the motion to rezone two eight three seven nine eighty-first road from R one to R three identity.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion or questions?
I have a question for Josh. If we don't rezone, what would that mean?
That would mean technically that what they're doing is not comply with our zoning regulations.
Okay.
At that point, they need to be considered, whether they want to be part of the city.
Yes. I would say yes.
Yeah. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Josh?
Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Brennan Jellings?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
Dottie Smith?
Yes.
And Tom Wheatley.
Yes.
Houses? We have another public hearing. And this is to consider the advisability of granting a conditional use permit to allow it's a Noah nonprofit institution in R three identity at this location. But I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move the wheel.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, well, Josh?
I'm not gonna add a whole lot to this, cause we beat this horse, you know. So really, the only thing that we really need to discuss is what sort of conditions you would want to put on this permit. So I threw a couple in here. I thought about putting something about paving in there, but I hadn't talked to Sandy about that and that would probably kill project if we did that immediately. But what I put in there was that traffic should be encouraged to not go north on eighty first road. Because once you get past their drive, well, frankly, you're probably lost if you don't know the area. And then the other thing is they have a parking, uh, plan, but there should be no parking along baby first road because that's already gonna be too. Those are the two I proposed. And I would imagine that they really wouldn't want people parking out there anyways, rather than being on the side.
What is the opposite end, what is the point in the baby first road?
Yeah, just curves around.
Ends up where it connects to.
It kind of ends up in the middle of nowhere, in honesty.
Kind of like a residential area out there and then they go down into a valley and there are four houses.
Yeah, so yeah, it just kind of curves around there. Yeah. And then you eventually run into the river again.
Okay, okay, I see where we are.
If you are not familiar with this part of the county, which unfortunately, not unfortunately, there'll be a lot of people that would be horribly lost, like beyond tiny, if they get going very far.
Most of our roads, county roads are laid out with freedom stones.
Right, you could figure it out.
Yeah.
But it would just not be good if they were wandering around there. Then you've got the, like the house up there at, at that corner there that's.
Sandy, would it snow, have any problem with these recommendations?
No ma'am, and we would also be very cognizant, as you're talking about with the township, as the township would, you know, maintains that road and, you know, right now it, it has a lot of issues from time to time. So of course, we would wanna be, we would wanna be a good neighbor to all of those things.
At some point, something would have to be done about the road.
Would you visit the county and see if they could overlay that or?
They might be willing to do it.
You know?
Right, cause the issue, the issue with the road at this point is you just don't wanna dig there.
Correct.
And we, unfortunately, I do, I do, uh, LiDAR and things with the drone. So you can see, you can see anywhere that's not paved. Like we can see down and we can see what's there, but the area that's been paved can't see through that. So that would be the biggest area for the overlay. And then we would just have to figure out some way to just overlay over what's there as we move a little bit to the north. There's one more spot to the north, um, after you come off of the pavement, that's a little bit suspect that we would wanna make sure we're not digging.
It'd be an interesting conversation.
Yeah, we'll do.
I have a feeling that that may come up when it goes to the county commission too, they may say something.
Would gravel work for that road?
Well, so it, it, it could, of course, anytime that you can have paved roads, people just, you know, tend to like that better, less dust, less everything. But we are not necessarily hung on a paved road because we're gonna do what's best for the property and to preserve what's there first and then whatever, you know, comes after that.
And I'm not recommending gravel, except you can't dig. And so gravel lays down real nice some places you can't dig.
Is that pretty, or whatever, yellow white rock or base and set up like concrete? It will be like, I don't really want to turn out this spear, it keeps just going and going.
Sandy, were the bones left in place?
So according to the coroner's report, part of the skeletal structure was removed. Part of it was not. I don't know the difference, why some wasn't, some wasn't. However, there are no official records at the county that indicate what happened to the part that was taken out. So I'm wondering if maybe it really didn't get taken out at all, but that was long before my day. So all we're trying to do is not, you know, open up a can of worms that we don't need to open up. Especially because then, of course, you could no longer do anything in that area. So we have to be careful as we move forward, but we will. And we're, we're trying to do everything we can to get our information straight first.
Anybody have any further discussion? Public hearing? Then can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second. Motion that's second. All in favor signify with aye. Close? Public hearing is closed. There's no further discussion, I need a motion to recommend to the city commission the request for a conditional use permit to allow a nonprofit institution in R three identity located at this location. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we grant a conditional use permit for nonprofit R three identity.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote, Josh.
Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Brennan Jellings?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
Dottie Smith?
Yes.
And Tom Wheatley.
Yes.
That's the last on our agenda, if there's any further business, we want to pick up.
The only thing I would say is I don't anticipate a meeting in February. I don't have any applications I have to run out. But there will be probably over the next several months, something related to the hundred one acres.
That's it, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second? I say to signify with aye?
Aye.